So you can start, the recording started Joe, so you can start anytime.
Yeah, I just need to pull up a doc like I said, I'm uh, everything just got kind of messed up on me. And have everybody just gives me one second here because now I need to pull this up again. Working off of multiple screens and I had everything nice and organized. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. Will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we will have our roll call. Commissioner Huggins present, Commissioner Johnson president, Commissioner Freiberger present, Commissioner for net present, I'm sorry, and Commissioner Fatizzi present.
Joe, Joe, I know on that it's customary for the members to acknowledge their presence on their own. If you could in the future allow them to acknowledge that they're here. Instead of just saying that they're here and instead of allowing them to speak.
You know, John, the whole virtual thing, I could see everybody's face, I guess. And and I'm having technical problems where I'm at as well. So everybody's going to need to bear with me a little bit, but I definitely make a note of that. But like I said, the whole virtual thing, when you're not present with things is a little bit, a little bit different. So I'll work on that. So I don't believe we have minutes from the January 18th many meeting minutes at this point. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I will open the general public's comment section at 6:32. And do we have anyone that emailed or called or is present at this time that would like to say anything?
So is that I see that there's one person that is not staff or planning commission on the meeting. So if you wanted, if you had any comments at this time, you could go ahead and unmute yourself and speak otherwise. We'll move on.
Did that person like to introduce themselves? Is that HT?
Oh, hi. Yeah, my name is Harry and I'm a recent recently moved to Secret Valley, but I didn't have anything to say. I just wanted to kind of follow along.
Well, thank you. Welcome to welcome to town. And if you do in the future, this would be the forum to participate in. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
So at this point, I will close the general public comments meeting. It's at 6:33 period. I'm sorry. And John, I think you have the floor now on our unfinished business side.
All right. So as many of the planning commissioners remember, last year about this time, we spent several planning commission meetings talking about updates to the design standards as they affect the existing buildings and new buildings in the central business district. The first we examined the the issues that we were seeing, and then we examined our existing plot and existing planning documents, including the design review standards and guidelines, specifically chapters two and three apply to businesses in the downtown. Chapter two applies to all development and chapter three is specific to the central business district design of buildings and signs. The planning commission looked at also looked at design standards from other communities to look to see what the other communities had to offer that we might like to put into our design standards and get some good ideas from. Or things not to do possibly. So we looked at the planning commission looked at Arlington and Snohomish and Sumner. And I'm sure the planning commission, we also kind of spoke of other design standards and other communities just in general throughout this review period. Arlington, Sumner and Snohomish. I'm not sure what I just said, but Arlington, Sumner and Snohomish. I feel like I said one of those incorrectly. And then we the planning commission continued on to have a lengthy and detailed conversation at the end of July, talking about what they would like to see our design standards look like. We had the staff had presented a kind of a bare bones update of the the design standards in the central business district. And after a lot of good discussion, it was now in the hands of staff to synthesize that information that the planning commission provided and put it into writing in to the amendments to the chapter three CBD design standards. Nicole, listen to the all of the meetings minutes for all the meeting videos for the for this project and tried to glean all of the information freshly. And of course, remind herself or to learn about this project because it started before she started here. So she did a good job of learning where the planning commission started and where we ended and drafted the amendments in attachment to of the memo that you have. A note on those draft amendments is you're going to see several colors, several different types of strike throughs. There's double underlying underlines. There's all sorts of different things going on. And that's that reflects reflects all of the different times that we've worked on this. So you know, first we made some amendments, I think in June and then July. Or May and then July and then now some other text underlines things double underline when when it's been deleted from one section, but just moved. So you know, a lot of the things you'll see are striking out and you may look at and go, oh, that looks good. Why did we strike that out? It's very likely that it was actually just moved to another portion of the of the document. We did a lot of formatting changes as far as trying to have stick to the the heading structure of so we have two major sections, building design and building design and sign design. So those are like two general sections within chapter three. And then within each of those sections will have like a bolded section. So for example, general storefront profile. And then under that will have intent, which kind of gives the background of that general storefront profile and what we're trying to achieve some narrative around what led us to the standards that were that were providing. And then the next indent would be standards and standards are things that are required for new development and changes to buildings in the central business district. And then there's another indent subheading of guidelines and those are encouraged, not required items. So that is the that is the format that we have a bold section. A broader heading intend standards and guidelines. So the previously didn't read like that. It got kind of to be honest, as staff that was interpreting this and trying to apply it to applications as we receive them. It was difficult to navigate because it was unclear what really was a standard and what was just discussion points. So we tried to make it a lot easier for us to administer on the back end after a permit is submitted. So thank you to Nicole for putting all of that together and didn't do a whole lot of work on signs because this effort was really intended to address buildings. As you recall, last year in 2021, the planning commission spent several months discussing digital signs in the central business district and in the city as a whole. And as part of that process, we kind of beat the sign thing to death. And that's kind of a colloquial way of saying, we studied it very detailed and made necessary adjustments to our our development regulations. So signs are covered pretty well. And that was a little bit outside of the scope. We did address some formatting in that also. And moved in some of the some of the information from the last ordinance that we that we did talking about design, digital signs. So that's my long, well, it's almost my long winded, not quite done. One of the things that the planning commission wanted to see was also some better definitions for some of the terms used throughout the document. So Nicole also found definitions for awning canopy and marquees and included those in in this draft as well. So what that requires us to do is bring in chapter 11 of the design standards, which is the definitions section. So you'll see in there again, the last two pages of the memo and the attachment is the underlined information explaining what is new in that definition section is only two pages long. Hopefully those work for you. I think they were pretty good definitions that we found. And if there's any other definitions that we think need to happen to this as a result of this document, we're happy to put those in since we're doing a thorough review. What I was hoping we could do today is is go over these these proposed amendments. I appreciate that. It's been a long time since we talked about this. So if the planning commission needed to kind of re, you know, get their minds back into this issue, that that's understandable. If you've learned any more information since then and had any epiphanies, I know this topic's been in my mind a lot every time I drive through the area with any sort of historic buildings or new buildings in his in older parts of town in other cities, I try to glean ideas and have been putting it into this as we go. And I think I probably have a few more that I've come up with since I even wrote this that may make it into the next draft. So if you could provide feedback on this, we did not schedule a public hearing today because wanted the planning commission to get a fresh look at it and not have to jump in and then do a public hearing and make a decision. So we do anticipate that we're close enough that any changes between now and next, any any changes that we come up with today should hopefully be fairly minor. If if you want great changes, that's fine. We can do that. We're just kind of expecting like maybe maybe we'll be ready to make some final touches on this and bring it for a public hearing at the next planning commission meeting, but that'll be up to you. Now I'm done with my long winded intro.
John, that was awesome. I have to tell you guys did a great job on this and I was going to beat this camera into submission until I got it to work. And it is a little bit flustering into this format sometimes. So
We can't see you now.
No, no, I anyway, this was, this was just a great read for I think any of us to really understand what we're actually looking at and how to articulate it. And I think all the meat here is really in the attachment too. So if anybody else would like to kick on into attachment to have out of it. And Pat, this is a very passionate part of your profession is what you really enjoy, number one, and anybody else have at it. I'm done. We're going to need to unmute.
Perhaps I'm adding a definition for dental molding. I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly, but my
Dental work is is quite literally the little notches down that kind of look like teeth that would typically be seen on the underside of the the parapet, yeah. But we can add that Nicole's, I'm sure taking notes and we'll be adding that.
If you think it's useful, so it was helpful. It's mentioned so many times in the document and it was helpful to see it, you know, illustrations, of course, but definitions are also helpful.
That one, an illustration goes a long way. So we'll work on that.
Commissioner Frenette.
Great job, Nicole, on this document. Probably drove you crazy to read it a thousand times, but thank you. I was reading the in since we're in definitions right now, I was reading the awning canopy and marquee. And I know exactly what you're trying to say and it's well spelled out, but I was just wondering if instead of off the side of the building, all of them say off the side. I know you mean off the vertical, but I was looking at other definitions and they say over the entrance or over the sidewalk, but didn't know if you wanted to add a little bit of extra to that.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good idea. I can look into adding that. Yeah.
But it's not also not exclusively over an entrance either. I mean, I'm just trying to think of my office here down on Warner and Metcalf, and we have them over our windows too.
Yeah, that was more my my interpretation of using the the side of the building because yeah, I've seen them over windows too. So
And speaking of visuals, the word just slipped my mind. Were we going to have drawings or photos or something to show what we meant in the final draft?
In the final draft, yes.
We can, yeah.
Illustrations were going to be on for for the sake of formatting.
Yeah. Because some of those other documents we saw from other cities or towns, the ones that had the visuals, either photos or sketches were very helpful.
Were there any terms or illustrations that you had in mind?
Who me?
You or any of the planning commission, if there are specific terms that or you know, types of illustrations that you think would be useful. You know, like dental work, for example, we're going to provide an illustration of that because it's hard to hard to envision. I'm thinking we might do a illustrations of an awning or a marquee or all of them to kind of show the difference between of them.
Wings coating might be a useful one to have in the definitions as well. And potentially an illustration of that. I know it's mentioned and there is an illustration somewhere of some of these things. And of course, now that I'm looking for it. But yeah.
Hey, I need to apologize because I had the, I didn't have it in a gallery view. So Danielle, I couldn't see you if you were on the other side, but now that I have it in the view, I could see everybody. So raising a hand if anybody wants to have a comment, at least I can see everyone and kind of manage this a little bit better than like I said, in the past. I have a question on the awnings and Nicole, maybe you can answer this. It says size and scale of awnings, canopies and marquees shall relate to that of the building architecture and features. So I guess my question is this, over time, even though you start with a general architecture and features, things do change, right? The windows, especially for one doorways, things like that. So how would be looking, how would we look at a size and scale of awnings, canopies and marquees relating? Would it be like the current architecture or what's your idea on that?
I'm thinking the current architecture. That was, yeah.
You know, Commissioner Huggins has spoke about this several times about keeping in the vernacular of the buildings next door, like when designing a new building, you want to keep in, keep in mind the buildings adjacent. So it's really just meant to be a broad term, a broad way for us to administer what would be allowed. So you know, we wouldn't allow different types of of, you know, different kind of divoning, maybe a fancy shiny metal awning on a building that is brick and more ornate, you know, it would be you know, angular and shiny doesn't go with the with like a brick building with white white inlay brick and whatnot, but it might go well with one of the 50s buildings that are more you know, flat front, I'm thinking the the building that is now currently the restless and reuse, what's it called? The 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 place that repairs and resells vintage furniture. That building itself doesn't have a lot of historic architecture to it. So you can have different details on the front of that building than you can say the building next door. And you don't want to mix and match those period types. If that's what I was trying to trying to say.
Do you want more? For lack of a better term, more definition outside of it shall be well constructed. So as not to pose a safety hazard, what would somebody's definition of what they think is well constructed versus what maybe OSHA or some other agency might have, is there something that maybe L and I has or some other definitions of what well constructed actually is? Right? You might, you might think something is well constructed, but you might not. So
But you know, it's kind of a moot point because you need a building permit for
Okay. What would be the standards for a building permit when when they present something like that? What do you look at?
Well constructed, safe, kind of that definition in the nutshell, really, it's just it can't come down on its own, be blown down. It needs to have wind loading calculations. Okay. If it's projecting from the building, that sort of thing.
This Commissioner Johnson and then Commissioner Freiberg right up there. Go ahead.
Kind of getting back, John, to the requests about specifics on visuals. And I apologize, I can't give you specific as far as the previous municipalities that we've reviewed, but under so under the first building design, general storefront profile. That second page where you kind of go into Art Nouveau era and false fronts. I mean, it may be good to plug in maybe a couple images there. Just because, you know, I feel like, you know, we, you guys really did write up, you know, kind of a good explanation of Art Nouveau, but you know, picture always says a thousand words and you know, who knows what the eye of the interpreter is. And so you know, having, especially since this is storefrontage, you know, most of the CBD anyways. You know, I think the entrances in particular kind of just highlighting the historical feel is is kind of important. So you know, that's probably two areas that I would recommend having visuals.
So illustration for Art Nouveau and
And false front.
Commissioner Freiberg, you're next.
So I had more a question kind of for clarification. On page 17, so it's under general storefront profile, but standards under required, it lists A through J of the required. And then it says, in addition, may include any of the following as part of requirements. So there are just other options to kind of give people suggestions, but there have to be five things chosen from that initial list. Is that how I'm, is that correct? What would be the incentive, I guess, for people to use these other additional things?
You know, that was something that I had a little bit of a hard time understanding myself.
Because because you can't sub them in.
Right.
So that was still, that was stolen from the UVMU design regulations, I believe, Nicole. And so what that represents is a lot of these are pulled from the general requirements for all buildings in chapter two. And then in the UVMU chapter, we added additional requirements K through P. That would also, you know, give more possibilities in the UVMU. So I'll take a look at the structure of that. That's important. Thank you.
I I don't know. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Finish your finish your thought.
I I don't know if it would be relevant, but you, as you pointed out, I saw those initial ones already in chapter two. So the additional ones could almost be somehow if there was a way to kind of bring them forward to really encourage them to also be used in addition since chapter two already lists the others, but I don't, I don't know if you can just take out the the ones from from chapter two, because they're kind of, I guess, necessary. So I don't know. I'm just kind of trying to figure out how to how to make them both work better.
So so what we were trying to achieve, and I and I agree, is a little confusing. When we did the UVMU standards, the urban village mixed use overlay standards, which is a different area entirely. We were trying to create a similar like to a downtown walkable neighborhood. So we did something similar to what these CBD standards are was we take the, we took the standards and guidelines from chapter two, buildings for all, you know, design standards for all buildings and imported them into the UVMU standards. So you didn't have to go back and forth between the two chapters and say, well, this chapter says I got to require this. And then you come to chapter, the next chapter and says, well, you then you also have to require require this on top of it. So
And that's helpful.
I'll look at it. So I'll look at a way to make this less confusing. What it says is ground floor, street facing facades of commercial areas and mixed use buildings shall incorporate at least of the following elements. I'm not sure why listed A through J got stricken. So you, so you have to pick five from A through J. And then in addition, you have to pick any one of the following, doesn't say one, but any of the following. And then there's K through J. So we can say, we can just list all of them in one list. But I think the intent was you wanted to get a bare minimum of, of these. And then take, then, then you pick from a different list of additional, which gives you, you know, a higher level, whether, you know, how it works in practical. I don't know.
Actually, just that different wording that you said in there. If, if it changed it to say in addition applicants must or, or need to pick at least one from here to kind of make it so that they actually, otherwise there's no real incentive to choose those additional ones. They're basically, they're kind of as a suggestion, I guess, and FYI. So, so that is all I was saying is that I felt like it should be a little bit more tied in and, and more have more of a purpose.
So I will leave in, so I'll make it clear that first you pick five from A through J. And then you pick one from K through P unless you want more from K through P.
Yeah, one or more.
Is the planning commission wants two, do they want three, do they want four from K through P?
Commissioner Huggins, you're up next.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to say, great job on, on, on the work on this. It really reads a lot better than, than it did and is much more informative. I have two things I wanted to say. One, everything that John said was true, but my, my major concern with, with the building is actually the, every building has a, both a horizontal and a vertical modulation. And we're pretty careful with our, our horizontal modulations. You know, we, we want buildings to be broken up. So, you know, you have column window, column door, column window, column door, or some kind of modulation that breaks up the, the length of the building and makes it interesting. But what I'm concerned mostly about in downtown Cedar Wally is, is failures to, to pay attention to the adjoint, the adjacent buildings modulation vertically. Where, you know, you don't want a window that comes or a window sill on your building coming into the middle of the window on the building next door. I mean, unless that's your intent, for some reason, you really don't want that to happen. So it's, it's nice to be sympathetic, at least to the, the building on either side of you in terms of making your window sills rough, roughly the same height or as close as you can, staying within your design. I mean, if you have a totally different vision, then you got to do the thing. But, but anyway, I see a lot of hodgepodgey architecture when I go through other towns, you know, some towns get it right. Cedar Wally's mostly got it right. But some places, you know, you have those things where you're driving down the street and everything looks nice and the buildings are all different, but their modulation stays the same. And all of a sudden you've got, you know, like on ours, it's the, the, the old Courier Times building, which was next to the one that burned down and it's a 1950s. And the modulation of the windows don't match anything else in town as do the materials. So anyway, that, that was one of my concerns. As always been one of my concerns in town is that we, you know, have sympathy with the modulation. The other thing I wanted to, to, to bring up was, and, and I'm not trying to nitpick. We have a definition for, for Clara story, and I don't believe we have any Clara stories in town, but we do have what's called transom windows. And they, they, at first look, they might seem the same, but they're, they're different. A transom window is a window above the transom of the door or large window. And that's what we have. So you have the door and then there's the transom above it. And then there's a window above that or a row of windows above that. And that's what our downtown buildings have. Clara stories basically are the same thing, but usually because they were designed originally in, in cathedrals and stuff like that, Clara stories usually have a roof below them, a sloped roof below them and a roof above them. And so they're letting in light basically through a roof. And that, that's the difference. Whereas the transoms are just on the vertical wall above the window. A Clara story could be inset further into the building. So I, anyway, it'd be nice to have a, all I'm asking for is like a definition for, for transom window and, and Clara story window, because they're, they're different things.
Yeah. So Clara story says, a continuous band of windows located just below the ceiling of a generally tall and important space. So in a small building that may come down and basically act the same as a transom window.
Yeah.
But it, but that would really be, you're right, that would be a transom window because it's just above the, the large window or door. Whereas a clearer story is really intended for, I mean, it says it in here, it's generally a tall building. So architecturally, it would be some, some really tall 20-story interior room. They were, there would be windows at the top of that building. Like you wouldn't be able to see people on the street from it and you wouldn't, you know, if you were in the room, you'd just be looking up at it and not be able to be much besides the sky.
Yeah. And if you want clear examples, like I said, just look at, look at old churches. If they have a sloped roof on them, if they're tall enough, up there somewhere will be a Clara story window. But the roof will go up so far and then there'll be a gap and there'll be windows, a strip of windows in there. And then there'll be the, the roof that's over the actual nave of the, of the, of the church. So anyway, yeah. So there are, there are times when they could be the same thing, but they actually are two different things. You, most of the time.
So Patrick, to to address your concern with the modulation and articulation of windows. I did put a note under the guidelines. And this is just encouraged under the doors and windows section. It just says modulation and articulation of windows is encouraged. Is that something that you want to include maybe in standards or elaborate a little more on that?
Well, the, the issue isn't, is that no matter what door or window you put in, it has a modulation by its existence. It, it's modulated. So that doesn't have any, I don't know that it even, we want teeth, but, but it doesn't have any teeth to it, right? Because every door automatically has a modulation. So what we're trying to do is have them at least explain why they have their window, when they're building a building, why the, the window sill at the bottom of the window is running into the middle of the window on the building next door and not, you know, sympathetically aligning with it or near, nearly aligning with it. And again, I don't want to tell architects what to do all the time or builders what to do all the time. But it is pretty jarring when you're, when, when you're doing it. And if you're trying to keep a particular, a particular standard for design in town, that, that would be something you want to have is so. Did you see the difference between what I'm saying is that one thing to just say it has to have modulation, but you want modulation that's sympathetic to the, to the business, the buildings on either side.
So I think what we're hearing is move number four of guidelines into standards and change it to read modulation and articulation of windows shall architecturally respect the modulation and articulation of adjacent buildings.
That's awesome. That'd be a great way to say it. Yeah.
You want to throw in the word required?
Well, shall is shall, shall is a, a require, that, that, that means it is required. And it'll be under standards which are required also.
Yeah.
I am also going to ask that Nicole find definitions for modulation and articulation because, and, and some sort of illustration, because this, this is a difficult concept. Mr. Huggins clearly has it down pat. And, and when he sees it, it even causes him to blanch a little when it's not done right. The rest of us need a little education. So this is, this is the method that we use to educate ourselves and the people and anybody that's designing a building.
Thank you.
I had another comment.
Go ahead.
So I knew I had seen an illustration. It was back in chapter two. So something like that, that on page 14 of building design, it, it shows a lot of those features. You know, the, the base and metal on the top and kind of up the, the belt and the dentil and the transom windows too, I think. So maybe something, yeah, that calls out that, that stuff. I don't know how many illustrations we need, but something that at least shows several of those things would be very helpful.
We need a lot. These are design standards. This is where we can, this is the, the most appropriate place to put illustrations, photos, things that you don't see in most code. You know, code doesn't generally include a lot of, of illustrations and pictures and things. The design standard is the appropriate way to do it. People should look through this and be like, oh, I get it. Oh, that looks good. Oh yeah. I'd like my building to look like that. Instead of, instead of just confusing people into not wanting to read it. So the more we use, the better in a document like this. So we're happy to fill it up with photos and illustrations.
And there's a second illustration on, on page 15 that, that shows even more. So yeah, that was, again, you can explain it, but like you said, when you actually see it, then it suddenly all makes sense. So, yeah.
Is that underground level details and massive?
On. Yes. Yep. It goes into page 15 is where the actual illustration is for that. And because I was, I was having a hard time figuring out medallion, what exactly that meant and belt course. Even though we do have a definition for belt course, we don't have one for medallion. But I suppose it's somewhat self-explanatory, but at least the, an illustration shows it right away. So.
John, did you, I, I dropped off some standards that, that I was given when I first got on the planning commission, when we used to have a, an architectural review board. And it was pretty thick and it had, I don't remember that was, that it was wordy, but it had a lot of illustrations of Art Nouveau style stuff. And I assumed you had one at the, at, at the city hall, because that's where I got my copy from years ago. But.
You dropped off your, so I think you recently dropped off your, your municipal code or your comp plan book, the big blue book. Is that the one you're talking about?
It was a blue, well, I dropped off the blue book, but with it, I dropped off a, one that's had a, a Art Nouveau design on the front of it and it, and it said architectural standards. And that was the standards that our old architectural review board did. So when people wanted to do something on the main street, they submitted their, their design to the architectural review board. And we did that up until 2002 roughly. And, and then there wasn't enough people that wanted to be on architectural review board. And Mark Crist retired. And so, and so, you know, we just put it, put it away and came up with these design standards. And so I didn't know if there was a copy laying around, so I dropped mine off there. Anyway, it doesn't sound like you, you saw that. Yeah.
I've seen a few things like that around. I don't recall you dropping that off.
You weren't there when I did it. I, I don't remember who I dropped it off with at the counter there. But anyway, and it, it wasn't like I was expecting you to incorporate all of that into us. But I just was saying that it gave a lot of really nice illustrated examples of storefronts and, and, and facades that, that people in the nineties at least thought were fit with the Art Nouveau thing. So anyway.
No, that, I appreciate that. That's, if we can find that, then I can find it, even possibly find it electronically. And then we can just copy the illustra, the useful illustrations out of it.
Yeah.
At a minimum. And, you know, maybe there's, maybe there's some nuggets in there that we might even, some of the text and standards that we might want to drag in.
Yeah, I don't remember it being very texty, but, but yeah, I thought I might save you some time hunting for illustrations is all I.
I don't know that that document was ever adopted because, you know, I've got, I've done a pretty comprehensive review of the, the adopted documents for design review. And I haven't come across that one.
Well, it wouldn't.
If it was, it would technically still be in, in effect because I've never unadopted it. Unless it was unadopted when we did these design standards, I think it was in 2003, when these were four, when these are originally adopted.
Right. Well, I don't know all the workings of, of how all the layers of city government work, but, but the architectural review board may have adopted them and used them. And when they went out of existence, I mean, they were never incorporated into the, into the city planning, you know, documents. So I, I really don't know what, what they're.
It was called architectural review.
What's that?
What was it titled?
Shoot, I should have wrote it down. Should have kept my copy. It just, I remember it said architectural, something architectural review, architectural board, architectural standards. I don't remember what.
Well, look around for it. I, I've got some ideas.
Yeah, you'll see it. You'll know it. It's got a, it's, it's black and white and it's got a Art Nouveau design on the, on the front page of it. So.
I think I know which one it is actually.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry to drag you guys through all of that. I just thought it might save some time when you were looking for illustrations.
Commissioner Fernet, did you have your hand up just earlier?
Oh, no, I was scratching my head or something. But thanks.
Anyone else? So John, what, what's your plan moving forward? You were talking about the potential public hearing. Do you want to do that at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter to give you? Because this is a pretty, you know, complicated project. It seems by the time you find all the different illustrations to embed into the overall design guideline document. What, what would you like to do? It's on you and Nicole to feel what your timelines are.
I, I, I think we can do it from what you, from the, the feedback we've got today. There's no major work to be done. It's just a lot of little filler work and we, we already, we know what we're looking for. It's just kind of plugging it in and, you know, fleshing out some definitions and rewarding things. It's, it's, it's very doable work, finding the illustrations and getting the darn thing formatted properly is going to be probably the most consternation of it. So, so far from what I've heard from planning commission's feedback, I think we could easily have a, a public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay. I'm just trying to be respectful of other things you might have going on down there right now. So if you feel that that's a totally achievable objective, no, I think that's great.
The council's, the council's interested in seeing this move forward too. So there's not, not, not a good reason to, to slow it down. Or just get her done.
I get it. Do we want to discuss anything more about parking? It's always been a big deal. So on attachment one, I went looking through it and for me, it was just an education basically. But do we have any more commentary on parking since it seems to always rear its ugly head every now and then? That would be a good thing.
So the commission did a pretty, pretty, pretty big push on, on parking regulations lately. And we're still waiting to see how that bears out because we haven't had any significant development occur yet. That we need to take care of it, take advantage of those. We have talked to people in preliminary, but no, and how it would affect them. But nothing, nothing that's received permits for.
Okay. So at this point, let's move on into a planning commission discussion and information items. The floor is anybody's. Raise your hand. Is there anything, anybody would like to discuss? Go ahead, John. Sorry. Anybody would like to discuss? Go ahead, John. Sorry.
So I know you're probably gonna have a lot of questions about where we're going. And if this is kind of a good segue, you were saying, you know, you want to be respectful of what the planning department is going to be bringing to you know, doing. So we 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 are entering the twenty twenty comp plan cycle.
Okay.
And the the list of things that we want to achieve has mushroomed into quite a quite a list. So it's going to start at the March second work session. That's a joint city council, planning commission work session. I had mentioned in the email that we're going to be doing that. That meeting is going to be hybrid. So you can attend in person or in or via Zoom, whichever however you're more comfortable. It will be held in the city council chambers because that we we can have the the that's that's where the these meetings have moved because we've got the better AD system for the hybrid meetings. So the planet commission members would sit on the side bank of of chairs. That's usually for staff during city council meetings. City council will sit in their usual spot and staff will be out in the out in the field there. The meeting itself is going to have a couple of agenda items. First is the twenty twenty two proposed docket items. And there's no major changes to any elements of the comp plan, but we are bringing up potential recommended changes to several elements. So first, it's gonna, we're gonna be amending the capital facilities element to incorporate the new school capital facilities plan, which is adopted by reference into our comp plan. In there, they keep their their impact fee calculations. So we need to put it into our comp plan and get it adopted and at the same time update our our code to reflect their fees. So we can now start charging their their proposed impact fees and it's the significant increase, but it's still, you know, it's not as high as other school districts by any means. So you'll you'll take a look at that. And I'm going to go over this in detail at the March meeting too. So I I'm just going to give you a little pre preview here. So you know what's coming your way. Public Works Department has to update any parts of the comprehensive plan and code that address source control, which is like a stormwater thing. So they'll be making some amendments to the transportation element and chapter two uh, of the comp plan to address source control. So updating language to make sure that it meets state requirements. That's it's a state required thing that they'll be be do be doing. So again, so you know, important changes, but not massive changes. We're also going to be opening up the parks and rec element and looking at the impact fee calculations. And the planet, the city council wanted to look at possibly increasing parks impact fees to account to to allow for more parks projects, parts development projects. So we'll look at that. How much work that's going to require? We don't really know yet until we get it open. And finally, some transportation plan stuff, you know, every couple of years, the the public works director, Mark Freiberger, needs to amend the transportation element to reflect current projects and the state of the transportation system. So we're gonna open that. He's having it some modeling done to see what the the new projections of traffic are and he'll have a lengthy presentation on that because he's done a lot of work on it. But it's not a major rewrite. It's just doing some updates. We're in, you know, twenty twenty two currently. The state requires that all cities in Skagit County update their comprehensive plans every eight years. So it's due in twenty twenty five. June of twenty twenty five is our ma- next major comprehensive plan update. So now's not a time to go whole hog on any of the elements because we're going to be updating them, starting that process in probably a year and a half. So we're done in time. You know, if we're due in twenty twenty five, we'll probably start in twenty twenty three. So we're we're pretty close to kicking off our our major GMA update cycle, which would be urban growth areas, population forecasting, the whole nine yards. And a lot of things have changed and are probably going to change that affect our population density issues. You've probably been following the the proposed legislation to change density requirements in single family zones to allow, to require that cities allow duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes in a in a town like Seadrivally. In larger towns, it has a much greater effect. That's moving through quickly. The legislature.
Also, also the the tiny tiny homes is in the legislature pushing tiny homes.
Is it tiny homes or accessory dwelling units?
It's tiny homes. Yeah. The less than five hundred square foot, they they want those allowed. I think partly for the like emergency housing and stuff like that, but they actually have the people from I was watching the state's station, whatever that is, twenty three or whatever. But anyway, they were they were talking about, they had the tiny home people there presenting their side for that in Olympia.
There is, there's also a bill. I'm not familiar with that one. But I'll have to look out for that one. There's also a bill to change how we how cities handle accessory dwelling units. And the way it's written right now, we would be required to eliminate our owner occupancy requirement. They're also re- requiring that we allow I think it's two ADUs per lot, as long as it's over four thousand three hundred or four thousand five hundred square feet, something like that. Like an attached and a detached. But you know, it's still midway through the legislative process, so not gonna not going to get too worried about what the specifics of the language of what it says today. I read I read the most recent engrossed state bill. So that's the there's the draft and then there was a revision and then there's this one. So this is the third one. And it's changed a little. But that one's moving really fast. So the effect of these are on density. So if all of our single family zones and all of our residential zones are now going to accommodate more units because of the ADUs and the duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes, that means we can accommodate more density in our existing zones and our inner existing urban growth area. So that would possibly affect our need to expand our urban growth area, which, good or bad, you know, it's just it is what it is. Yeah, Eric.
Do you happen to know the bill numbers on the ADUs or the duplex, triplex, fourplex legislation?
I can get that to you while you guys chat. I do.
Thank you.
So where I was going is twenty twenty five, we're doing the full meal deal GMA update to our comp plan. So right now we're just kind of doing some little updates. Uh, and then in then at the end of that session, we're gonna do a video for Open Public Meetings Act training. It's a required thing that city council and planning commission have to go through annually. You probably recall, I've sent you these videos that for you to watch on your own and then report back and self certify. I haven't had a lot of a lot of people do that and report back. So Plan B is to just force you to watch it at a at a city council meeting. But we're also looking to have a question and answer session as part of that, too. Just make it a little bit more engaging. And that is what's planned for March second. Beyond that, we'll be rushing the, you know, whatever is whatever it's going to be on the docket to the city council at the next planet, this next city council meeting, which would be seven days later. So is that the ninth for them to officially set the docket? Which means planning commission could be reviewing the twenty twenty two comp plan at the March fifteenth meeting. So we're on fast track. At least some part of the the comp plan at the March March fifteenth meeting. And then, you know, some of those are small, so they they might just be, you know, a review and then a public hearing at the next one and then be done. So we're we're actually anticipating we could jam the, you know, your that's bad word. We could move very quickly in our review of the twenty twenty two comp plan updates and be done maybe in June at the planning commission. Maybe even May.
I have a question. So whatever comes out of Olympia and just listening to and actually following what these proposals are, it's it's basically the bigger jurisdictions pretty much pushing their own agenda to the remainder of the state. Our problem is our transportation. Since we do have a lot of available land that you can literally put the five pounds of potatoes into the one pound bag. We got a serious issue right now on Cook Road on Highway twenty. Everybody's heading westbound to get to I five. So I don't believe that whatever comes through the the sausage grinder, so to speak, it needs to take the composition of the transportation infrastructure prior to requiring a city or any other jurisdiction to allow pretty much unbridled growth, because this is what it looks like to pretty much everybody here. So anyway, it's going to be interesting and nobody knows anything right now. So and how would that affect us, by the way? So let's say they do push that through, like they change our ADU to now wire two and everything else that the state is now going to require. That would be a big modification to our overall code overall.
Overall, what?
Our overall zoning code for five sevens, pretty much everything.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, yeah.
And our current requirements don't get grandfathered in.
Depends on what it says. Depends on how the legislation passes and is then ultimately, you know. Last year, there was a very similar ADU rule
Right.
that passed legislature and then the the governor vetoed sections of it, which eliminated some of the the a lot of things, really the meat of it. The interesting thing was the reason he vetoed it was he didn't feel it went far enough. So that's that's my understanding of the reading of the veto. Which means it kind of set the table for a more robust change this year. So the middle housing bills is is HB seventeen eighty two and and SB fifty six seventy. Those are companion bills. So you can either look look up either one on the ledge site.
I'm sorry, what was that seventeen eighty two and what?
And so HB House Bill seventeen eighty two and Senate Bill fifty six seventy. So there are two separate companion bills. But if you go to the ledge page for HB seventeen eighty two, it's got a link to the companion bill SB fifty six seventy. And looking up the looking up the ADU bill for you concerning accessory dwelling units is HB House Bill one six six zero.
Thank you.
You guys are masochistic if you're going to follow it, but you know, anybody in the anybody can comment during the the ledge sessions. So so they make it easier than ever. You can do it remotely now. I bet they'd be swayed additionally by people in position of planning commission and say things like, you know, hey, you know, we just worked on this. We very specifically tried to address these issues. We understand these facts in our community. And there's a lot of housing advocates that that are are involved. So and the the Association of Washington Cities, which is, you know, conglomerate organization for Washington cities. There also are lobbying groups. So they they request comments from the cities around the state and and then they speak on our behalf to save us time. So we don't all have to go. Otherwise, we could all line up at ledge your own on our own. And 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 testify, but that gets a little difficult because we used to have to drive down there.
Now, since the March second meeting is a virtual meeting.
It's not.
Hybrid meeting, a hybrid meeting. I stand corrected. I wonder if we can draft Senator Wagoner to participate in that. I mean, even if he's down in Olympia, he's he's a big advocate of this city number one and maybe that be that might be something worth throwing out there. He's always been our advocate. So he would be the best one to figure out what's going on since he's at ground zero.
Call him up.
Okay, I can do that. Yeah.
So that's all I had for planning commission information. I just wanted you to know there is a truckload of comp plan stuff bearing down on you. So I hope you're all excited to 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 get into the twenty two complan cycle. It's going to be a lot of different information coming at you. And it's not gonna not gonna sit on your plates as long as a lot of these other long term projects will. So maybe it'll be, maybe it'll be fun for you to pick it up and shoot up real quick and move on.
It sounds like there's a lot coming out of every out of every at everybody right now. So anybody else have any anything to add to the discussion here?
I am, I I just want to say there there's some there's some information from back. Sorry, I'm going to drag up more history, but there's some information from around two thousand one through two thousand four in that area. They did a couple of visioning plans and a lot of information was presented to us back then about how you design your city affects the costs of infrastructure and and stuff like that, you know, so the the fact that the state is just gonna throw us all under the bus and make everybody live with Seattle's problems, basically. They're creating issues that we tried to solve back then. For example, when you build a lot of apartment complexes, you have to double your fire department and you have to fire, you have to double your police department. That's expensive. I'm just, I'm just spitballing, but I mean, that's basically what they were saying was is that you have to hire more police, you have to have more fire equipment because you have all of these apartment complexes. And that was one of the reasons why back then we we put a a moratorium on converting any more land to our, it was our eleven back then, multifamily. Because we had quite a bit of multifamily land at the time and didn't want to get into that situation where we were doing that. And the other thing that I, you know, every time we compact and make it so that people don't have have smaller and smaller yards and stuff, open spaces become more and more important. And so we're going to need more parkland in the city, which we're going to have to buy. In the city, which we're going to have to buy in order to have space for people to get out and do things because they're not going to be able to do it in their yard if they've got. Two eighty two eighty use in the backyard. So I'm not saying these things shouldn't happen, but every action has consequences. I look at housing like I look at inflation. You know, you you get paid money, you go out, you go out and you know, bargain for more pay. And then inflation hits and then everybody's back out bargaining for more pay. And it's just a cycle. And it's the same way with growth, you know, you can pack more people in. And you can do it, but then you're gonna and you can make all these adjustments to try and get more people into houses. But ultimately, you're not going to get anywhere because you have to provide more services that's cost money. You have to provide. More park space, which costs money. You have to provide more sewer. You have to provide everything. It's going to cost more money. So. You don't really get anywhere. So they're chasing in Olympia. From my point of view, they're just chasing a a. A unicorn's tail. So anyway, that's my two cents worth and and be prepared because it's going to be. It's going to be hard to balance and organize all this so that we still have a functioning city when when the legislature is done. Thank you.
You didn't hear any disagreements. So with that, I would like to hear.
I have, I have an interesting tidbit somewhat related. So back in two thousand, when they were doing that, we didn't have impact fees. So at least now. As we see development, we require fire impact fees. We require parks impact fees. We require transportation impact fees. And as, you know, Mark Freiberger says. All the time, because people complain about traffic all the time. Is with this new development, we get traffic impact fees and we use those to. Do the projects that are necessary to improve the roads to handle the new growth. And you know. Any improvement also is just good for the city. It's not, you know, it's not specifically used for. Backlog problems, but in generally, as you do a new project, it often takes care of those problems as well. So. Yeah, and you know, the the reason we're seeing all these densification and EDU projects is is really just. It is, it is a statewide issue, the. The the lack of available housing and the the cost of housing. It's kind of seen as, you know, by doing denser housing, you can produce housing cheaper. And so it makes more affordable housing. And not that any housing is affordable anymore. But Skagit County, you know, even, I mean, it's been years and years now, we're still at this ridiculously low vacancy rate. It's, I think it's still hovering around one percent, which if you know anybody that's looking for a new home. It's terrible. And if you know anybody that is looking for an inexpensive place to live because they're, you know, at the. Fiftyth percentile of 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 earning. It's it's just almost impossible. So that's why legis, that's the issue that legislature is trying to. Address. It's, it really is statewide. Wacom and and Skagit are some of the the lowest vacancy rates. As well as, you know, of course, Seattle area. How they do it, you know, we can argue all day about whether it's right, but that's the issue that they're trying to do, trying to address.
So with that, gives a lot of sleep on. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at seven forty four PM. Thank you, everybody. Sorry about the technical problems on my end. Have a great day. We'll all talk soon. We have a lot to think about. Thanks.